We are now in session. Katie won't be with us, she's got a work commitment that she couldn't get away from, so it'll be us. Everyone else is here. As is our usual custom, would you please stand and face the flag as we say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an addition to the agenda. We will add that as number eight. Family Medical Leave Act. More when we get to number eight. Anything else that you have? No? So I would look for a motion to approve the agenda with that addition.
I'll make a motion.
Jolene?
Second.
Seconded by Luke. Other discussion? All in favor of the agenda as shown with the amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll begin with scheduled presenters. Smith Schaefer representatives here for our fiscal year 24 audit presentation. Sir, you're on.
Oh, you know what? I didn't look that up there yet, did I?
You can do it by paper if you want.
No, that's fine. I gotta turn it on too. Boy, I'm just way behind. My ecologist.
Wouldn't let us in.
I bar the door.
He's doing that. I'm Steve Solverson from the Smith Schaefer office in Redway. Our firm is about 110 people now. I think we're number 209 in the U.S. Which is always kind of funny because I've worked for McGlady and Ibailey and they're quite large compared to our firm. But I've been at Smith Schaefer since 2005, actually. So I started in Rochester and then I moved to Redway in 2011 when we merged into that office. So I actually run that office there. And we do, I think, 35 schools, Andrew told me. I used to run all of them when it was 20 some. And when I moved to Redway, I gave up a lot of them because a lot of are south. And my wife is from the south, so it was kind of fun, South Rochester, going down there. A lot of people knew me and didn't know anybody else, which I thought was interesting. So we're charged, our firm is charged doing your audit this year. And it was a solid year. And with that, we'll get going. I'm going to present it in a summary fashion using that PowerPoint. And summary, we are charged of doing an opinion overall. And as you can see there, we had an unmodified or clean opinion, we call it, same as you had last year because now we have the OPEB on the books and all that. So we didn't have any issues or items to report with regard to the opinions. We have a clean opinion. As far as Minnesota legal compliance, we have to test certain things. You have got a letter from us that talks about some of that. And we had no exceptions there. Intro control, we've had this in the past. We actually prepared the statements, but we list that as an intro control finding, but it's not material. We did have some student activity compliance, non-compliance with regard to MAFSA. And you can see, we couldn't find a statement of purpose statements for those activities listed. And there was some with no activity, so if they have no activity, you're supposed to close them. That's actually quite common. And so you just want to put something in there to keep them open. And then the audit committee letter, which we'll go through at the end. Next slide, please. So we start with our ADMs. So you can see our ADMs didn't change much. They only went down 1.2%. And when I look at them, I guess to me it's positive because you see in the orange and the blue, those numbers have went up, which means, you know, they'll end up in our high school, in theory, so at least we hope. So we can maintain where we're at at least, and that's good. Versus, and we've been pretty solid the last three years, so next slide, please. This is the revenue for all funds. And you can see property taxes are up a little bit. That was our levies for debts, our federal fund, up $100,000 each. State aids, you can see there's quite a jump there. Our general aid was up about 345 and our special aid was up 600, over 600. So we gained a million there. That was, that was good. And you can see the federal aid's dropped off because we spent down our ESR and all the other federal funds we had from the past. And you can kind of see, you know, it's kind of interesting when you look at that, you can see pre-COVID and post-COVID, where we're getting back to where we were. So all those funds are gone. And then the other revenue, you see a drop there. Well, the biggest thing was in '23, we had that large insurance recovery. And so that's, that's gone. So that was, that was $600,000 plus, so. Next slide, please. And this is just a pie chart of the same thing, but we can see how it, how the mix transformed. You know, the federal dropped a couple percent, the other dropped a couple percent. Well, then our state went up 4%. So, you know, it kind of makes sense. So next slide, please. This is our property levies. You can see they're fairly consistent. Next slide, please. Expenditure, all funds. You can see administration's about the same. Support is up about $86,000. That's primarily benefits. Regular, you can see, is up a little bit. That's primarily salary benefits. And student activity was higher this year than last year, too. That's in there, too. Vocational, that's up about 60, that's salaries. Special aid's about the same, which is interesting. Our revenue's way up, but our expenditure's about the same. That's good. So we're gaining there. Community aid, that's going to go up with the programming that's going on there. Instructional, about the same. Pupil is up about almost 200, and 111 of that is contracted service, the rest is food service. That's actually in the pupil expenditures. Site building is down about 400. That's mainly supplies related to the storm in the prior year. And this year, then, encountering that is the lease, we have the new bus and paying off leases. And then fiscal and other, you can see, is up a little bit as primarily property insurance. Next slide, please. So this general fund as a whole, and the blue is the revenues and the yellow's expenditures. You can see they basically offset each other. And then we had some transfers and other. So that was our lease for the new bus as a hundred and some thousand. And you can see the green is actually our change in fund balance for the year. That was plus 198, so solid year. Next slide, please. And then we get into our unassigned and our assigned balances for general fund. You can see our unassigned went up from 388 to 500. So that was our 198 added on there. And our restricted grew a little bit, so. Next slide, please. Food service. The food service, revenues are a little short. The red is the change, that's 67,000. But we had a solid fund balance on the next slide. You can see we dropped down to 71. 21 is the inventory. So we've still got a solid food service balance, so that's good. Next slide, please. Community service. You can see for the year, our revenues did exceed our expenditures, so we bit into the negative fund balance. See on the next slide. You can see it went down, so we gained about 28,000 on there. And that's good. We want to eventually get that to zero if we can. Next slide, please. Debt service, again, we're funding our debt, which is all that matters. And we did drop down on the fund balance, 150 grand. Next slide, please. But we still have a solid fund balance. And we do have enough to meet our requirements and things like that, so no problems there. Next slide, please. And now we get into the sticks. So this is where we take the expenditures and we divide them by the ADMs. And in theory, it should be a straight line, right? In theory. Well, nobody has much theory because of coding issues, things like that. You get up and down, so the best way to do is compare to the prior year, compare to the state, compare to districts of our size. You can see we're a little higher, but you've got to remember the state average in districts of our size, that's the year before. So if I looked at the year before and I look at our 2023, we match up pretty good. So I'm suspecting that we actually match up even for '24. Next slide, please. Regular instruction, and this does include student activity. And you can see we're actually below the state average and almost right on districts of our size for the year before, or in '24. Those numbers are '23 because that's the latest that was available. So that was really solid. And the one after that? Next slide, please. This is the one I like because it shows everything. So the admin one, you can have coding issues. You know, if you code things differently, you can make the sticks jump up and down, right? Regular instruction is a little more stable. I mean, everything, everybody pretty much posts the same between admin and support and pupil and stuff like that. You can move stuff around, so you end up with a worse stuff. Well, this tells you then as a fund as a whole. And you can see, we're, we're way under the state average for the year before. And we're almost equal to the average for a district of our size for the year before. So I call that very solid. Next slide, please. And this is our summary. So you can see, general fund was positive, 198. And our unassigned is 3.3% at 500. Food service had a reduction. And Minnesota has solid fund balance. And community service made a gain on its deficit. And that'll take us to our letter. Does anybody have any questions? I go through it quickly and I'm just doing the summary and I don't want to take up a lot of your time, so we'll go to this letter. And basically, it just talks about our responsibility, planning, what are the significant risks in the audit? Did we have any changes policies on page two? We didn't have any. What are our significant accounting estimates? Depreciation of capital assets, that's for your government-wide statements that are in the front that nobody understands. OPEB and pension, our estimates put out by the state and your OPEB person, and they go into your financials on the government-wide that nobody understands. And then we have general and special aid. And the general, normally, we can get pretty close on the special aid. I saw one that was off half a million dollars. So we get reports from the state. And I was looking at their receivable. I don't remember how yours came out, do you?
They're fairly close. I believe it for next year to accrue.
So I was looking at one, last week, the week before, I was on one doing the draft, and their receivable was 80 and they got 400 for that year. And it's like, why is that? I have no idea. And it usually doesn't fight up until March.
Generally, it takes quite a while for it to clear everything out.
Yep. So that one's a tough one. And I don't know, ever since they changed it formally, it's really gotten weird. But I thought that was really good, what we had. You look at our expenditures and they're almost a straight line, but our revenues take a nice jump. That's, that's positive. Uncorrected correctance statements, we didn't have any to report. And then other matters or issues, we have nothing to report there. So that's all I have. Is there any questions? I do have copies of the PowerPoint for you. And of course, then you do have the electronic one.
Thank you.
Josh from the tent, actually, had to suffer a lot longer than you guys. We did the draft. Just went pretty quickly.
Go up to the panel.
But, you know, if you think of something later, you can always call me. And I'll just look at the, for the office number for Smith Schaefer, for Redway. That's all I got.
Questions for Steve? Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. And thanks for letting us in.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep. Be careful.
So our bottom line would be that we increased our fund balance by about a half a percent, right? 2.8 to 3.3.
Yeah, so when we talk fund balance, overall fund balance, we did fairly well, but there's some things are assigned. We've got some LTF fund dollars and some severance dollars, other assigned dollars. The unassigned grew to 3.3, which is positive for the district. Relative, we bump up $100,000. It sounds like a lot of money, but on a $15 million budget, it's not a whole lot for the district, but it's the right direction anyway.
I noticed our community service fund also increased, which is...
Yeah, it's in the right direction. It's a smaller negative amount. And what he didn't mention, what Julie does in his audit presentation, it's real common in districts our size that their community fund is in a deficit. As generally, we're offering things for our community that the board and the district sees as a positive. And to be honest, a lot of it is what is the feeder into our schools, so. But we want to make sure we keep an eye on that and not give it a deficit for too long.
We made a conscious effort to lower our fund balance goal a couple of years ago. And at one point in time, they want us to have four months in our pocket, which is just unreasonable. And we lowered it to what, 5%?
4.6. 4.6%.
So we're on the right path moving up. It isn't the utopian...
Yeah, you know, it's real interesting. I just had a Masmo event and some districts are kind of all over the place depending on their situations. District 196 is 12.5% and they have that. Another district is largely open and hold, 50% is their fund balance policy. And then there's some in the single digits as well. But it's all kind of a matter of what is best for their district. I think that we're probably, I think by and large, are very conservative here and we try to do the best we can with the dollars that we have. I don't, you know, in my chair, I would love to see 8 to 12%. It just makes, just for better budgeting and planning and it kind of takes out some of the highs, the peaks and valleys. But we've been very consistent in what we've been doing. We try to present a balanced budget each year and we've been pretty consistent hitting on that as much as we can. That being said, with some of the things that are coming down the line for us that we're going to need to cover, whether it be unemployment, that delay, those sorts of things, contract settlements, it's very important that we have a good showing and a good result on the operating referendum that's coming for the public. Thank you.
So I think a good goal for us would be to try to increase our general fund by 0.4 to half a percent kind of every year.
Yeah, yeah, you know, slow and steady is certainly good. I think that we just want to avoid stepping backwards. As long as we're keeping making the steps forward, I think we're progressing in the right direction.
Good call. Good work, Jeff.
Thank you. I know, I think they came in early. My son was home in the military, so I wanted to get done a little bit early so we can end early. Sometime we'll present this to you in December, so it's probably good for the district to and join us to have that sort of information as a plan forward.
Okay, moving along. Public input, comments are welcome from students, residents, taxpayers, people with kids in the district, and employees. Not to exceed three minutes, and it has to follow whatever we have on the agenda this evening, the concerns. We may or may not engage in discussion during the comment period, but we'll get back to you as deemed appropriate. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may not address criticism toward an individual district employee during public input. Having made that statement, is there anyone here that wishes to speak to the district about things? Yes?
So Dawn Lanning. You know, I looked through the meeting minutes that are up on the consent agenda, I think, right? And on those meeting minutes, there's no notes of any public input from those meetings. Is there a particular? No. I just made that, I guess I'm just making that observation, that none of the public input from those two meetings are included in the meeting minutes. And I'm trying to think if they should be. So, and then the other thing that I noticed, or I have questions about, like you said, maybe you can answer them and maybe you can't, but maybe you're going to tell me to call him. But there are a couple of items on your budget. I'm assuming these are check numbers, 67833. It was something to Bank of America for travel and conference fees, but it was almost $8,000 for that. And I'm kind of wondering what that, what that was for? You know, what kind of conference or what that was for? And then the same thing with something going to the Cannon Fellows Education Fund. It was another big donation for, it said Glowforge, and it was another, I think, $3,000 or something like that, that I was kind of wondering what that was for. But otherwise, that was it.
And you are correct. We will push you toward him to get those answers. You are right. So we don't have that information here at this time, but we'll certainly get it for you. You do have that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll take the second here.
Glowforge is an Ed Foundation-approved project. They donate the dollars to the district and then we pay out for that project, so it is actually used in the CDE area. So it's the materials for them to use. So that's an offset. There's no cost to the district for that alone. Bank of America is the district's credit card. It's not all the travel costs and fees, it's just a one-line description that goes in there. So it could be for events, it could be for registrations, it could be for subscriptions or instructors applied. It's just that all just lumped into there. So it's just the district's credit card payment each year.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? We're moving along. Consideration to approve the financial report. John?
Yep. Just, I mean, you've got enough for the last, anyhow, with the audits, so this is just kind of your normal cash flow statement and some sort of things to highlight in this document. I think the big one is the county taxes up at the top. So this would be the, we get two payments of the second half of the annual property tax. We just got the notice from the county and that was 824, so we hit the kind of estimate on that pretty close. The second payment will then come in usually the first week of November. Generally, what happens when we get tax revenue is the ideas payment, this payment from the state is reduced. So you see on the ideas payment, it's just $350,000. Generally, that is in more of a $600,000 to $800,000 range. So while we get the tax payment, the state part of it usually falls off, so it kind of say more or less equalized. We've been talking for, it seems, a very long time about the CDE HVAC project, and we still have some details to wrap up in there. And as long as we do, we've been able to use that fund entrusted as kind of a mechanism for us to earn some interest. So we've got some reimbursement there. That is just to pay back the district for those costs. It's all CDE HVAC expenditures. But as we kind of get towards the final wrap-up of that, we've done pretty well, maintained some interest in there, which has allowed us to get some projects done throughout the district and save, whether it be LTFM or maintenance-type items that, you know, are not the flashy things, but they're things that help take items off of that long-term list for us that need to be taken care of in the district and would otherwise either not get done and go to, you know, more deterioration, or we'd have to do, you know, bonding for. So the project, in all in all, really has been a good thing for the district, a great area and space for staff and students to learn in and some bonus items for the district facilities-wise to maintain and get done with. Kind of last thing to mention in this, and it may show up later, or I know we talked about some transportation, but bus leases. The one there that says one of three, that bus was ordered last year for this fiscal year. It's still in the process of being built and finalized and gotten to us, so we may not see it for a while. That number will be a placeholder and just keep moving down each month in the cash flow until we finally get that bus in. The other bus lease is one that's falling off, it's the last of the five payments. I know you'll see later in the meeting, the approval of a school bus for next year. The whole goal in transportation, we have, I think, 18 buses, is to always have one bus purchased each year and then one bus that's on lease so that we can rotate those buses every 15 years. It's been a process to get to that point. We're finally now, next fiscal year, to that point. We'll always be planning for one bus purchase, one bus will be on lease and turn those things over. So it's taken some time, but we've gotten there. It'll just be better for our office and the district to plan and budget for those items coming up. The difficult part is, it seems like every year, 5 to 8 or more percent on those buses, what used to be a $90,000 bus is now $145,000. As everything has gone up, that's just been pretty drastic. The last thing, I guess, to kind of mention, and it doesn't really show necessarily in the cash flow right now, the district is purchasing another van. We were scheduled to purchase a van this year, but there's been a need to purchase one that's handicap accessible, so we should receive that in a, we can have two weeks. It'll be available to the district, but it would free up, not always having to have that bus to transport maybe one student on the handicap. Need, we'll have that van to do that. Where then benefits the district a little bit is it costs much more. It's about $66,000 for the handicap bus versus about $45,000, we'd kind of be plugging in nowadays for one. But because it'll be largely used for special ed, we're out to depreciate that and get some plenty back on that, too. So the difficult part is, it's a cash flow. We've got to pay for it first and then we'll be able to get some depreciation off it over the next several years. If I have any questions, I can certainly do my best to ask, whether it be this or even the audit presentation.
So one question on the, on the new van. I assume we're not going to sell off another one?
No. The van's kind of become a premium for us. Had it been prior to the recent legislation, we probably would have traded in. They would have generally a lifespan of 12 years from the date stamped on the sticker. So 2023 van, happy product service after 2035. Now, as long as they pass DOT inspection, we're allowed to keep driving, just like the buses. And Andy and his crew and Chad take pretty good care of the vans. Usually, they end up being rusted out before they're mechanically unsown for us. So as long as they can pass DOT, we'll, we'll keep them. We get very low back for a van and we have a high use for those vehicles, especially whether it be, it's now always, you know, special ed transportation or IP transportation, but sometimes it's, you know, unsafe areas or turnarounds where buses can't quite get to it. We need to have those vans used.
And then since we started the bus rotation, have you seen a difference, you know, before my time of maintenance and what that's done for the, has it made a difference?
Yes and no. We got to a point where, for budget reasons, we'd keep pushing out buses. It kicks a very expensive cannon down the line and then we'd have a ton of buses on lease, six, I think six or seven at one time we had. It's fine, you can lease them, but then you've got several buses that are required to be changed out at the same time. And it's just hard to turn over. So you maybe have a new fleet when you have all those buses on lease, you know, half your fleet on, on lease to start. But then also you get to a point where you've got to kick out six buses and turn them over and that's difficult to do. So it'll just be better for the district all around, mechanically, maintenance-wise, budget-wise, for us to be able to stay on schedule. That doesn't mean you're not going to get a clunker of a lemon in there someplace where you're going to have to, you know, maybe maintain one a little bit better, a little longer because one gets kicked out. But in general, it should be better for the district to be on that.
And plus we're paying the lease premium for each of those buses also or that timeframe.
Yep. Thanks.
Yep.
Okay. I would look for a motion to approve the financial report as listed.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Luke, on the motion? Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by, wait. Any other discussion? All in favor of the acceptance of the financial report? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any singular item, it will be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. As a rule, we always start with Jeff recognizing the resolution of gifts.
Yep, we'll recognize the resolution of gifts and then we have another recognition coming up after that as well. And so this month's resolution for gifts, we have $10,000 from Gemini for robotics, $500 from the Ed Foundation for CPR training and certification, $3,597 from the Ed Foundation for 3D pens for the STEM lab, $1,489 from the Ed Foundation for decodable books, $1,967.87 from the Ed Foundation for differentiated instructional tools, $1,500 from Argosy Foundation for robotics, and $500 from Flux
and five hundred dollars from Flux Craft for robotics. And we thank you for our donations for this month from those great sponsors. The other recognition that I'd like to have the board be aware of is that Linda Jensen, a longtime custodian in the district, is planning on retiring coming up on January second, two thousand twenty-five. So just after the beginning of the new year. And we'd like to thank her for thirty-one years of service in the district. She was one that came to the job every day, did her work and did what was best for kids. So we thank her for her service.
That's awesome.
Absolutely.
You know, she deserves, she deserves the accolade that we give her. She's been here for thirty-one years. She's gone, she's seen a lot of people come and go in that department. And if you know her, she just goes about her job and she doesn't, uh, she doesn't do anything that would cause any uproar. She just does a magnificent job and we forget sometimes our people in the infrastructure, but certainly she deserves all the praise we can give her and we'll miss her. So, thank you. Thank you, Linda, for your time.
Yes, good luck in retirement. Hopefully I'll get there one day. Enjoying life.
Consent agenda. Does anyone have anything that they would like to contribute to the consent agenda? Any questions that they have? If not, I would look for a motion to approve when you're ready.
I'll make a motion.
Joel Lynn on the motion? Second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Brian. Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Carrie. Superintendent's report.
Uh, yes, we just have the items listed there. And then I wanted to give you a public meeting update on the operating levy. I gave my last meeting today at ten AM to the senior center with our coffee group. I was at a local church yesterday giving a presentation and so I don't have any more presented. And so unless you guys have any other ideas for me to go to present to or people want me to come and present, I'd be so happy to do that. But the vote is coming up next Tuesday. And then City Hall, normally during a general election, they will have the results of these precincts, one and two, for the in-town precincts. And so you'd have to follow the results on the Secretary of State's website for that night. But I plan on going down and getting the results at least from City Hall, but I'm not going to travel around to the other townships to get their results that night. We'll have to wait for those. But I would imagine that the, the city would probably get, give us a, a good indication of where this is headed at, whether it's going to be close or definite yes or no.
How did your round seminars, your presentations go, the last couple?
Good, good, I would say. Was, and there's a lot of good questions as always, but I would say positive for the most part.
What was the same question you think you got?
Boy.
Repetitive question.
Repetitive question? I, I think it was maybe not more questions, it was comments about the mandates and comments on those about, you know, what is happening.
Yep.
Encourage people to talk to their local representatives, whoever that may be. You know, there's questions around inflation and where is that headed and, you know, what is happening for that?
I think, I think the ones that I was a part of, I would agree that that was, did you get the feeling that, because I took it as the people understand the mandates and understand we're in a tough spot. Did you get the feeling that they were going to support us or try to stick it to the legislative leaders because of what they've done?
I, I would agree that people understand the spot that we're in. I think that's, I think that's been well communicated. I, I guess I can't get a good read on whether people are going to vote yes or no. You know, they may vote yes and then contact the state legislature and blast them. You know, they, they may vote no and not do anything about it. I don't know. I, I couldn't get a read on it.
Well, is, uh, was it forty-eight percent of the districts in the state are going out?
Uh, there's forty-eight districts.
Four districts going out.
Yep, and that's about a sixth of the districts. And I'm guessing that there will be more because the, there's four alarm fires going on in the Twin Cities metro area now about making cuts. And they're all coming out to the outstate asking us and wanting to have conversations about how we make cuts.
Oh, oh, okay.
Will they get a tremendous amount more funding?
Right.
There absolutely is frustration from the community when it comes to the mandates. They understand them and they're not very happy and they're at least willing to have some discussion. We know you're in a tight spot kind of thing, so.
Yeah, there's definitely empathy with that.
And it's, it's more unusual than it has been in the past. You know, we've, they, we've talked about mandates in the past, but it's so evident and it's so out there that it's just a unique spot we're in.
I think people are feeling those pinches at home as well. And so that, I think that's where that empathy is coming from. They're like, huh, sucks for us, sucks for these guys too.
Yeah, and we're not a unique district. This is going on throughout the state.
Correct.
You know, not only outstate, but also in the metro area when we're talking about how these are affecting school districts. Uh, that's all I have unless you guys have a question.
Okay, let's move along. Action items. Under old business, we have none. Under new business, consideration to approve a student trip to Spain. June twenty-sixth with Spanish teacher Karen Pago Paul.
Do I stand up? I've never been to one.
Yes, please come.
I'll sit closer.
Please come on up. If you wish to sit down or.
No, it's okay. I can stand up. It's good to sit in place. So hi, I'm Karen Pago. I teach Spanish here. I've taught for four years here and then ten years overall. I'm just bringing forth a really good opportunity for our students, for the board to approve. But before I get into like the nitty-gritty of it, I just want to establish that this isn't a new trip for the Spanish department. Pre-COVID, the Spanish department had a history of travel. I have also had a history of travel with students. I've gone to Spain with students and also Costa Rica. And I've also lived in Mexico for a bit and then also Spain. So the plan is to go to Spain if approved. It would be the summer of two thousand twenty-six, so it would be every other year with the humanities trip, which was the history of it prior to COVID. And it'd probably be in the summer, either the second or third week. Some of the stuff isn't concrete right now because I wanted to bring it to you guys first. And then I also want to survey students. In past, I would survey students about like, what's the timing? What's, uh, what are some things you want to do? So I can really cultivate a, a trip that all students are really excited about. The days would be anywhere between ten to fourteen. That's pretty common, especially when you're traveling to Europe. There's some travel time along with that and I want to make sure students are in the country for as much time as possible. The cost would be similar to the humanities trip. In past, it's been four thousand, five thousand dollars. And I know not all students can afford it. So I've thought about fundraising. Like I said, I took students to Costa Rica and Spain, so I'm well-versed in fundraising. Concessions is a great way to do that. But then also there's a lot of scholarships for travel that I would seek out too. And personally, I think it's so important that I know I'm probably going to do some sort of scholarship with my family and have students like write in what things they've been doing, why they're interested in going on the trip. And so I'm going to be personally, along with my family, investing in students. There's opportunities for, for travel because I think it's essential for everybody to be able to experience it. And it's also similar to humanities in that there is going to be a prerequisite. Students will need to have taken Spanish three or signed up for Spanish three. And we've seen Spanish three increase. So when I started here, there wasn't Spanish three at all. And then I, the second year I was here, I kind of was starting to say, we should have Spanish three. And I got enough students, actually doubled that amount. And then the following year, the same thing. And then this year, the same thing. So I expect that there's going to be a big interest in students wanting to take the trip with the increase in students taking Spanish. So it would be, and I'm assuming that next year's numbers for Spanish three is going to be similar to this year in the mid to upper twenties. And like I said, I've traveled to Costa Rica and Spain. Both of those trips were in a smaller school like this. So I would say easily twelve to forty-five students would probably go on the trip. But that's a big scale. But again, I want to survey students. I want to see what they are interested in, their financial situation, what they're comfortable with and what their parents are comfortable with before, uh, before moving on. And so, yeah, I didn't want to also start the process before bringing it to you because in a previous school that I worked at, I needed to present to the board as well. So I just wanted to bring it to you. I think it's an incredible opportunity. Every student that goes on the trip changes in such a positive way and they continue to talk to me post-high school. This was like the best experience. This opened my eyes. This made me decide not to necessarily be a Spanish teacher, but to do something outside of their community. And then maybe it opened their eyes a lot to what's more out there. Do you guys have any questions at all? It's very overwhelming presenting to adults, but I present to like thirty-four students every day, no problem.
What made you pick Spain this time?
Um, well, Spain is really good in the summer. If you go to Central South America in the summer, it's the rainy season. So then all the activities, outside activities that you want to do have the potential of, well, it's going to be raining. Also, so it has the best weather. And then also I know a lot of students are very, very busy in the school year. And so I wanted to make sure that most students could do this opportunity. And I've, I've had other students feel like overwhelmed when they've only gone on like a week or five-day trip about getting back and trying to get caught up. So I didn't want to say, okay, we're going to go over spring break, but then we're also going to extend it a little bit farther because I know that pressure for schoolwork and other things gets to be a little bit overwhelming. So I wanted to make sure students have the most opportunity in the country that we go to and not having the pressure when they get back or before to try and catch up academically.
How do you, uh, how you pick for chaperones? What are you going to do there?
So that's interesting. That's always a popular conversation because it is a, a trip to Spain and because it's with the Spanish department. I really want students to be practicing Spanish when they're there. And so a lot of times if we have a parent, that parent is pulling that student out of Spanish. Or when I'm communicating with the group, then I have to say, okay, now we're going to say it in English. And so it, it just, it, it, it lessens the opportunity for growth when we're traveling or when the travel guide is talking to us in Spanish, the parent or whoever is lost. So I, I, I would assume there's many parents that would like to go, but I would also caution parents to maybe give their students this opportunity to practice Spanish, to engage in Spanish. And also it's kind of a bubble-wrapped independence, right? They're not fully on their own, but they're getting close to junior, senior year where they're going to have to be out on their own. But there's somebody like me who knows Spanish, who's traveled a lot, not only in Spanish-speaking countries, but throughout the world, that feels really comfortable. And we also have a lot of great tour guides that come along with us. I've never had a tour guide that I was like, this was a so-so person. So, so I'm, I'm assuming there might be chaperones. I, I was thinking my husband because he also minored in Spanish and worked in the U.S. Embassy in Spain. So he had to navigate the metro. He had to talk all in Spanish when he was working those days too. But we'll see how the numbers shake out too, to see how many, uh, how many chaperones are warranted. But I'm open to parents. I just, I want to give students the best opportunity to grow and learn. And sometimes that's not always the case with parents when we're speaking Spanish.
Hello.
Bob, you should be about ready by that time, right?
Yeah, you, you're, he's, he's working on it. What is it? It's not dual-lingual, what, what's it called again?
Babel.
Babel, yep, babel.
I'd be standing there with Google Translate.
Which is the smart way to go. You get a, you get a certain age and you need to keep clicking upstairs here. And that's given me the opportunity. She and I talked a little bit about my, uh, my endeavor into a foreign language, if you will. She very support of it.
Always, at any age, at any time.
You're right. It's, it's a year and a half away. I, I might be able to say thirty, forty words.
And they all have to do with a menu.
That's half the battle when you're traveling, is the menu.
Any questions for Karen?
I just say thank you for being willing to do this. It's a great, great opportunity.
It's an incredible experience. I mean, I myself went when I was sixteen and it was just, it was incredible. Even my friends who are in their thirties now talk about the trip that we went on. And it also jump-started them to, again, not be Spanish teachers, but do travel on their own in college and then after.
Super cool.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, this is an action item. Consideration to approve the student trip to Spain, June two thousand twenty-six. With Corinna's ahead, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Joel Lynn. Any other discussion? All in favor of approval of the Spanish trip to Spain, June twenty-sixth? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Carrie.
Thanks so much. I got to run to see my baby before he falls asleep.
Yeah.
See you guys, thank you.
Consideration to approve a bus purchase fiscal year twenty-sixth?
Yeah, Josh alluded to it earlier, but we're in this still COVID washing machine of being about a year behind in bus purchases. And so last year around this time, we approved a bus purchase for this year and the bus still isn't quite here yet, but hopefully coming soon. And we need to approve a bus for next fiscal year. I'm asking the board to approve a bus purchase for next fiscal year that will come in after July first.
And so you said by next year, then we'll be in that sweet spot. Will it be purchase lease, purchase lease?
Yeah, so this is kind of last year, finally getting to switch over. So next fiscal year starts, one bus purchased, one bus will be on lease. The one that will be on lease is the one we're currently waiting for. The one of purchase will be this one for next year.
Okay.
Andy's got some initial paperwork on it. It is a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for this one for next year. So it also allows us to plan and put that number into next year's budget as well.
So essentially buses are route buses? And then we somewhat demote the other buses to activities?
Nope. No one's go activities, activities gets pushed into the road, generally.
And, and we don't have a surplus of buses right now? We have what, what we have?
No, I, well, surplus could be maybe a misnomer. But you might have one that's allowed if there's one broken down to be able to pull one out. Whenever it's a spot where we have, you know, a road day, we don't have a bus to go. Where it would get tough possibly is all roads are out and everybody's team is trying to leave at three o'clock for their events. And then we have to do some, either adjusting or planning better. Because we, we have a limited number of activity buses to send out when all the routes are going.
I don't know if you know, last year we had eleven routes. That's still the case?
Yeah, I think it's probably ten regular routes and then one that's kind of a special one. But yeah, yeah. It goes to regular. And that's for the bus. There ain't certainly not a lot of vans that go out as well. And that's a consideration. It's gone back and forth many times over the years. You're painting on where you're at with budget and where things kind of move. But technically within the two miles, you wouldn't need to transport. We do in our district. A large part of it is the Highway nineteen right in front of the school. It's kind of a hard place to have kids cross. And so we kind of committed that we'd pick up all kids or at least have the upcoming to pick up all kids throughout the district. So that's the number of the routes that are included there. All there really would do is help, maybe put a bus not out on a road each day. But we, we're still going to have a fleet of at least seventeen everywhere that way.
Any other questions? If not, I would look for a motion. One more?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Quinton, a motion to approve a bus purchase for fiscal year twenty-sixth?
Correct.
Correct.
Second?
I'll second.
Luke on the second? Further discussion? All in favor of the approval of the bus purchase for fiscal year twenty-sixth? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Carrie. Consideration to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five teacher seniority list. Jeff?
Yep, this is a yearly item, uh, that the district needs to approve. This seniority list, uh, the seniority list could be used in the case of potential cuts if the district would need to go into those sometime next spring for the next budgeting year.
Once again, we do this every year.
Yep.
Look for a motion to approve the seniority list.
I'll make a motion.
Jo Lynn on the motion. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Clint. Further discussion? All in favor of the twenty-four, twenty-five teacher seniority list, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five winter coaching list. Reed?
Uh, we did make some updates here today, so if your paper copies didn't get printed till today, there are some changes. Um, I'll pull that up. Uh, the only thing left here to fill is we do have some old things here for boys' basketball. Uh, Coach Davis does have a couple leads here that he's exploring, um, so we will get those updated here for the next meeting for your approval.
There used to be, uh, I wouldn't say people standing in line to coach, but we, uh, we, well.
They can let Josh speak to it, but it's a lot of ask for next year, ask for next year. So, and that's understandable. Everybody's busy. Everybody's got, uh, other activities with their kids or whatever that looks like when we're gonna get to be, uh, that age. So hopefully we get a little swing back where we can get a few more people that are interested.
Hoop season is a very long season.
Yes, it is.
It is. Um, you know, for me, I've been doing it for twenty-five, thirty years and I'm used to the Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, not being around. Uh, it is, but we'll, we're gonna fill that. I've got some pretty good leads. I'll be following for some others as well, so, um, just been kind of focused on audit until now, so we'll be all right.
Anyone have any questions for Reed on the, on the coaching list? If not, I would look for a motion to approve as shown.
I'll make a motion to approve as shown.
Luke on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jo Lynn. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve Minnesota State High School League Resolution of Governing Board Supporting Form A Application. A mouthful.
This is something a high school league will, will offer each fall depending on their tournament revenue and whether they can offset anything for the districts. And our amount as we apply here will depend on how many other districts apply and then what that'll, what that'll look like. They'll usually try to give out anywhere from a hundred thousand or a little bit over. So it's not gonna be a ton, but it'll be some that'll help offset any shortages.
It's a resolution, so we will, uh, make a motion and a second, and then clerk will read the resolution. Motion?
I will make a motion to approve.
Quinton, the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Any other discussion? Clerk, read your resolution.
Oh, you want me to start at the top or you want me to sit in the middle? Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts. Whereas the governing board of school district two fifty-two, um, recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities, whereas the M S H S L Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist schools in recognizing, promoting, and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletic and fine art programs. Therefore, be resolved that the governing board of school district number two fifty-two supports the school's application of the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for Form A grant to offset student activity fees. Can you get a vote?
Yes, vote would be for the approval of the resolution.
Okay. Luke?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Clinton?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And myself as yes.
Yeah, pass it by a five-year old.
So a question on that. Have, have we done that before and been granted it before? We have. And do we do it every year?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as they offer, we apply for it.
Cool. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Consideration to approve a leave request in accordance with teacher's master agreement, Article Ten Leaves of Absence, Section Eight Medical Leave from January sixth to January twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and a leave request in accordance with the teacher's master agreement, Article Ten Leaves of Absence, Section Seven Childcare Leave from January twenty-one to twenty-five, from January twenty-one, twenty-five to April eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, with a return date of April twenty-two.
Uh, this is for Liza O'Brien, and I recommend approval.
Motion?
I will make a motion.
I'll second.
Quinton, a motion to approve the leave. Jo Lynn on the second to approve the leave. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Consideration to approve a retirement request effective June fifth, twenty twenty-five.
This is for Pam Wolf, and we do thank her for her service to the district as well.
She took us through a tough time.
Yes, absolutely.
Look for a motion to approve the retirement request.
I'll make a motion.
Brian on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Other discussion? All in favor of the retirement request, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. With the Family Medical Leave Act, that, uh, word salad up above, I think, I don't want to read it because I'm gonna mess up the dates, but essentially Family Medical Leave Act, ten twenty-one, twenty-four to eleven thirty, twenty-four.
This is for Sammy Lawrence. I recommend approval.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jo Lynn?
I will second.
Seconded by Clint. To approve the Family Medical Leave Act for Sammy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That is carried. So you see what the informational items are, upcoming. Anything else that you want to add? If we have room to add it, we will do so. But before we adjourn, Cannon Falls has taken the, uh, the path that they did last year and won their first two games, football. It's a nice trip to Rust City when we could only drive twenty-five minutes and find several of our schools here in the area, but to our benefit, how is the attendance?
I thought we had a decent crowd Saturday at Rust City. It was a gorgeous day. You couldn't ask for better weather.
I actually think we had just as many people there as what they did.
Yes.
There we go.
One thing for everybody to note here is we are now on NSPN, no more huddle. We are now on NSPN TV for section football and also section volleyball starting tomorrow night. Um, NSPN started doing basketball last winter at Mayo Civic and had good success for it. The region was able to get some revenue back. Um, and so they have committed that to doing that for, uh, this fall for volleyball as well. So.
It is free.
NSPN. So just buy that monthly subscription and that will take care of what you need for tomorrow night and Friday night if you're not able to attend. And Mayo Civic is all cashless now, all cashless.
You know, if, uh, having used that, it's not only opting into the Cannon Falls activities, every activity in southern Minnesota and even northern Minnesota is on there. So anybody who wants to watch Benil in St. Thomas can do that, not that they do.
I want to give a quick update on tennis and how they did.
Uh, we had three girls make it to state. Um, we had one last year, three this year, one as a singles, two in doubles. Um, we went up as a good crowd there that came out to support, uh, those girls in their, in their matches. Um, tennis, and I'm gonna get in trouble for saying these things, so I'm gonna apologize, but tennis is a little different where if you win your first match, but you lose your second match, you're done and you don't advance to the next day. But if you lose your first match, or, yeah, if you lose your first match and then win your second, you do advance to the next day.
So.
I struggle with that. I also kind of struggle with the soccer offside as well, so.
And.
But none of our girls made it to that second day. Uh, but nonetheless, we had a, a, a great send-off at the high school and the elementary and, uh, fire trucks in the community and, uh, it was a great accomplishment, so.
And they had a, a great season as a team too, right? Like that was individual, but team was really good and no.
We had a successful fall with all of our players.
Yeah, no seasons on tennis.
And they just missed the state tournament as a team.
Went down to the third doubles, but.
But with, with, with tennis, I think it's even more prominent than anything else where there should be, it's like a private school class, you know?
They are going to three classes, right? I heard.
Yeah.
They're, that'll help.
I think volleyball.
Tomorrow night, we got the four seed. We pleased and brought them up at six o'clock.
In Rochester.
Yeah, Mayo Civic, totally cashless, so. Ticket online.
The goal is Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday.
Yep.
Football on Friday.
I was gonna say squeeze football in the middle there. Busy, busy.
Those are good things. Thank you. So once again, uh, looking forward to the next meeting will be November eleventh, and, uh, we'll do some canvassing of the election results. And, uh, I'm sure we'll have an abundance of things in addition to that. We always do. So I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Jo Lynn on the motion? Seconded by who?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brian. And then the discussion?
I just have one quick thing, since we won't have a meeting before election day that when you're out and about, just encourage people to go out and vote. We got a chance to do some, some really neat things here locally. Um, we'll have some new board members, um, throughout that as well, and, um, obviously state and presidential is all important to get out of vote. So continue to make a push, um, as you're out and about.
Good talk. Okay, we have a motion to second on the floor. No other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.